It's time to get our meeting started, but before we get started with our meeting, I'm gonna ask Commissioner Huffman to come and lead us in a word of prayer. Come or stand how we want to do it.
Make a bow out here. Our Father, who art in heaven, Lord, God, again, you have come to come together for a long time. Lord, after you come this evening, Lord, become as someone that has been done power. Lord, become this evening with thanksgiving on our heart. Lord, become looking through the hills when we talk about your strong power. Lord, after you come this evening, Lord, we want to thank you for all you have done for all that you wanted to do for us. Lord, reden our behalf to Holy Spirit into this meeting, leading us in the right direction. Lord, I ask that you may please continue to bless our county, state, and our nation. Lord God, please test me in whatever form of good or all over your name. All heaven to love one another, you have loved us. Lord God, just our prayer for you and your labor, in your son Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
First of all, let me say, I am Lewis Maxwell. I serve as chairman of the county commission, and I am so thankful for those of you who've come out this evening. We have with us tonight Commissioner Robert Mike Barrett, District 4, of which we are now meeting, the Honorable Edward Huffman, District 2, with us, and we are just thankful to them for coming and being with us. Commissioner Barrett, did you want to say anything? We always honored to be in your district.
I'd just like to welcome everybody in District 4. We come here happy and believe happy, and that's our motto.
Commissioner Huffman, did you want to say anything?
I just want to thank everybody for coming to. I ask that you please, Lord, as I stated in my prayer, I ask that you lead the God's right direction.
Thank you. Let me tell you first of all why we're here, so that, one is, I've heard all kinds of stuff, but I want, our mission has been, we've gone to District 2, we've gone to District 3, we're District 4, we'll be going to District 1 tomorrow night. But the purpose of this meeting is to let you know what legislation that we are proposing, so that you get it directly from us. Tonight, we've come to share with you exactly what we propose and why it's being proposed. We did not come to debate why it was done one way or the other. We will try to share with you the information, so you can form your own opinion about whether you support or you don't. I can say to you right now, is that the county commission does not have the authority to put on any tax or to put on any amendments. We have to get permission from the Alabama legislature. So where we are now is simply a request to our legislative delegation for their consideration to introduce and hopefully have pass legislation to authorize us to do some things. And those things, we're gonna talk about in a minute in detail, what have you. Our objective tonight is to let you know what the legislation is and hopefully how it would affect our community. Now, again, keep in mind, we can only request, we can only make a request. Even if we make a request, we can be denied by our legislative delegation, or it can be changed totally altogether. We can only tell you what we request, and we're hoping that if they put forth the legislation, it will be what we request. So that's why I want to understand that from the start. We don't have a thought to do anything but to make a request. The Macon County Commission has requested two pieces of legislation, only two, two pieces of legislation of our delegation. And our legislative delegation consists of our representative, who's Representative Peavlin Warren, and our senator, Senator Billy Beasley. We cannot get anything to the Alabama House of Representatives nor the Senate without going through these individuals. If these two individuals do not agree, both of them must agree, on what we request or a piece of legislation, or it is dead when I get to the floor. Because on Alabama House and Senate room, legislation has to be introduced in the House of Representatives, and it must pass. And it also must be introduced in the Senate, and it too must pass. If it passes in both chambers and the governor signs it, then it becomes law. Now, that has to do with what we call a legislative, a local act, legislative act. That's a legislative act, a local legislative act. Now, there's another piece of local legislation that's called a local amendment, amendment. That too follows the same procedures with the exception of, with the exception, well, let me say this, local acts do not have to be voted on by the citizen. However, however, the Senate and the representative could put that provision in to require that it be voted on by the local citizen. It does not have to be. Now, different from a constitutional amendment, well, with a constitutional amendment, it's a little different. One is, it's a, has to be a vote. And if, the difference between a constitutional amendment and a local act, one is, when you say constitutional amendment, that means that the Constitution of Alabama, the total Constitution is amended. You know, we say that Alabama has the most amendment to its constitution than any state, simply because a local constitutional amendment actually amends the Alabama Constitution. Now, the only time you need to amend the Constitution is when you're requesting something that the Constitution itself does not allow. Good example, when Macon County request was for gambling, gambling. Alabama Constitution as a whole said no gambling, but we had a local constitutional amendment, and it passed, which only authorized, I'm talking about ours, man, that many others, but at that time, it only authorized gambling in Macon County, just on effect of Macon County. Many of you probably have seen on your ballot when you go to the poll, amendment that affects, say, Jefferson County, Shelby County. Why do you have to go down it? Constitutional amendment, if, right now, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, if one senator or representative opposes the local constitutional amendment, it has to be voted on statewide, has to be voted on statewide and voted on in the county that is affected. Let's say if we had a constitutional amendment for Macon County, it has to be, it had to be voted on in Macon County. It has to pass in Macon County. Now, just because it passes in Macon County, in order for it to constitutional amendment, it has to pass statewide. If it fails in Macon County and passes statewide, it still fail. If it passes statewide, I mean, it passes in Macon County and still fails statewide, it goes nowhere. It has to pass both locally and statewide before the constitutional amendment, okay? But we're not talking about constitutional amendments here tonight. We're talking about local act. The first local act that this commission has requested of our legislative delegation is an act which will call for the staggering of terms of the Macon, of the commission. Right now, all of our commissions, including the chairman, is elected during the year that the presidential election is being held. Everybody, everybody is. What we're, what we're asking for, we want to stagger the term, so that everybody's not elected at the same time. In this proposed legislation, we're asking that, that two members of the county commission, along with the chairman, be elected during the year that the president election is being held. And then two other commissioners elected during the, during the year that the governor of the state is elected. So you have staggered term of the commission. You won't have all new commission coming, well, the possibility, you won't have all new commission coming in during the same, well, at the same election you want to have. Somebody may go out for whatever reason, maybe appointed, but you will not have all of them being elected the same year, if this legislation passes, okay? Now, why, if, why are we saying that? One is, we want you to know, because in order to accomplish that, in order to accomplish that, we have to make some adjustments in the two. Somebody has to term be extended for two years in order to start the cycle of rolling. This proposed legislation would extend for two years the existing term of the commission from District 4 and District 2, our odd number, I mean, our even number of commissioners. Even, even number. Now, it could have been, could have easily been 1 and 3. But why we want you to know this? Because somebody may be considering running for commission in 16, the election is 2016. So if this legislation passes, District 2 and 4 will not be on the ballot. So you won't be able to run for commission with District 2 and 4 in 2016. This legislation would extend their terms to 2018. They would have to run in 2018. As it, their term will be automatically extended, extended for two years. And after the election in 2018, every four years, you would have, every, actually, there will be an election of commissioners every two years, but the commission still would be serving a four-year term. But every two years, two, two, at least two commissioners will be on the ballot. The year of the presidential election, that's the year that the chairman position will be on the ballot, along with District 2 and 4. And that's what that, that piece of legislation does. Any questions about that? Any question about that? Okay? All right. The other piece of the legislation, again, for those who came in a little late before my opening statement, is that we did not come here tonight to debate the legislation. We will try to answer any question that you have about it. Everybody can, we want to share you the information as to what we're proposing and why we're proposing. You can formulate your own opinion. If you are against it, you know, you have an opportunity to go to the senator and the representative and encourage them to not pass it. Because even, like I said, we, it's only a request for us. And if they choose, for whatever reason, they can, may not even, one of them can say, "I just don't like it." And, and if either one of them says that, and don't, if the representative says that she don't introduce it in the house, it's dead. If the representative said, "I'll introduce it in the house," and the senator said, "I don't want to fool with you," it's dead. So it's a moot point. So we don't have the authority to make it happen. We can only make a request, so please understand that. So everybody can formulate your opinion, so that you can go to your senator and representative and let them know how you feel about it. You can let us know if we feel about it, but we can't just, we can, we've already voted to put the, make the request in. You follow what I'm saying? So now, if you want to convince the commissioners to change their mind, you have the, the right to do that. I'm here tonight simply to share with you what the proposal is and why we propose. Second piece of legislation we asked for is a 2-cent gasoline tax, 2 cents gasoline tax. Ermob, 1 cent to be used for economic development, and 1 cent to be used for, to build, to take care of our roads and our bridges. It's earmob for that. It's the only way, the only thing it could be used for. Now, on the economic development side, all of you know, you probably don't know the specific, and I won't go into specific tonight, but Macon County is, is, is positioned, and we are competing for a major, major industrial development, of development, major. And I said major, only say to the point is that we represent the state of Alabama in this quest. There are two states going after it, and Macon, Alabama is, is one of those states, and Macon County represents the state of Alabama. We have the full support of the governor and his staff. We have, not just talk, but I'm talking financial support to help put together an incentive package, so that we can attract this industry. We are not in a position at this point to give any details about it. But now, Macon County has to come up with approximately $3 million to go into that incentive package. We're gonna have to come up with incentive package, about 15 million, there about. But we're going, we're talking about maybe 120, 130 million dollar investment. So we have not gotten it, we have not been given a go here, that, that state of Alabama has the project, probably will be within, hopefully, we'll, we'll know something, probably gonna be about a year. But the point is, if, if the company says that we're coming to Macon County, we've got to be ready to put our package together. Part of our economic development initiative, gasoline initiative, is to help develop that incentive package for this particular project. That's what it's, that's what it'll be used for. We've got to have it. Many times, we talked about getting industry in Macon County. I'm gonna tell you, ladies and gentlemen, if you don't have money to go to the table, you're just whistling Dixie. We missed, this county missed opportunity for a 90,000 square foot building right across 199, simply because we could not come up with the half million dollars to match it. It's about a $3 million project. We could not come up with the half million dollars to match it. You know, with the closing of Vicarland and the loss of revenue, put us in a financial strait. And I'm here to tell you, people, they don't wait on you. You got to be ready to move when the opportunity come. And we are trying to position our county, so that we can, when we go to the table, we won't be going there just talking. We're ready to, to take advantage of it. That's the economic development part of it. It means that we would, we would use that tax revenue to, to flow the bond, to offset a bond, just as simple as that. We don't have $3 million that, in reserve, that we can go get. We don't have $3 million that we can get. Government has to go, that's why the bond market is there. We have to use it to do an industrial development bond, to, to try to be at the table of our package. We're not the only one. Now, when I say we have to come up with about 3, that's, that's the local portion. The state is committed to approximately 6 million over several year period. You, you, all of your partners, you, your power companies, all these different entities that will benefit, they all have already agreed that they're going to bring up, you know, bring stuff to the table to make it happen, because they want it to come. This is a possibility of approximately 1,200 to 1,500 jobs over three up here. And these are very significant jobs. This would, would transform our community. I don't want to give anybody the impression that we've got it, but I'm telling you, we're in a better position than I've ever seen our county in. This is the first time in history, and somebody tell me wrong, the very first time in history that Macon County has, has been the lead county to represent the state of Alabama after a project. Most of the time, it's in Montgomery, somewhere else. And you have to put together incentive packages. For Mercedes, I think that was what, $500 million that had to, had to be brought for. Hyundai, I don't remember how much. But people don't come into your community to make investments just to, to give people jobs. They come in for an opportunity to make money. Now, jobs and, and what have you, it's a good byproduct of it, and we, 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 that's what we benefit from, the byproduct. So that's why we, now, again, without going into detail about anything, in order to have that kind of economic impact, what are the first things that's gonna be affected? Our roads and our bridges. So if you're gonna attract something like that, then you have to, we just can't say we're gonna put this on our roads and then not do anything about it. So we've got to, they can do a thing. We got to position ourselves to maintain our road and to improve our roads. So that's why we asking for it, okay? We don't, we're not asking for to raise nobody's salary. It would be earmob for those purposes. And, and it would be earmob, we asking them, we are asking them to earmob that in the legislation, so that even commissioners come after us, we have to follow the law. If the law said 1% to be used just for road and bridges, that's all it can be used for. The other 1% for economic development, you can't use it for nothing else. Now, if, if the senator and representative down the road go back and put in another law to change it, that's one thing, but that's not what we asking, okay? Commissioners, did I, did I miss anything?
I don't think so.
Those are only two pieces of legislation that we are asking for, okay? And that's why we're asking for it. Are there any questions?
Yes, sir. Chairman, it was reported in the Tuskegee News, this is a, and I thank you for, for this presentation, because we, I have not seen this in the past. It was reported in the Tuskegee News that there was a rental tax that you, you asked a representative and Senator Beasley to sponsor, as well as an occupational tax.
Well, let me tell you, you know, again, I don't believe, I don't know who Tuskegee News talked to. That's why I say I want you to get it firsthand. There are a lot of things that was discussed, you know, talked about, but, but what, what, what is, this is, I'll tell you, what is, if passed, these are the only two pieces of legislation that, that we're put forth, okay? These are only two. Now, let me tell you this, just because we submitted these two pieces of legislation for, the senator and the representative can change them.
Sure.
Any kind of way, even, not only can they reject them, they can earmob the money to go for anything they want to, and we can't do nothing about it.
Yes, sir.
Chairman, he said something about occupational tax. It was discussed, right? And what we asked for in that, we asked for the county to always have 1% occupational tax. If the city of Tuskegee annexed out into the county, or any other city annexed out into the county, they couldn't take our 1% occupational tax, which is already in place. That's what we talking about. We weren't talking about increasing the occupational tax. We just wanted to hold what we already have.
And, and since you mentioned it, but I, but discussion was, was tonight, was to talk about what we had before the representative to produce. That's not being asked for, okay? There was some discussion on it, Commissioner Barrett, for your information, right now, say if we got a, we brought an industry out into county, outside of all of the city limits, 1,000 jobs, county would get its occupation. Right now, under the occupation law, county does not collect one dime of occupational tax inside the city limits of Tuskegee, town limits of Franklin, town limits of Shorter, town limits of Nottosaga. We do not connect one dime, the weight of laws, we are prohibited from doing that. Now, but if we, if we, and we are working with these communities to help them get businesses and industry, because we're bringing things to the table to help them to develop. We're working with Shorter to help Shorter develop those plants out there, and low ups and all these things, but we won't get an occupational tax from the way the law is currently in the realm. And, but let me make this point. And we're gonna have to address that, because now, way the law serve right now, our legislative delegation said they don't want to deal with that, that even talk about that at this point. But I'm gonna tell you right now, if we recruit an industry with, say, 2,000 jobs out in the county, and the city of Franklin, Nottosaga, and Hummer, if their town council vote to extend their city limits to take that in, we are automatically knocked out of occupational tax, just by the way the law is written. That's the way the law is written. How we gonna fix that? We don't know, but it has to be fixed. It has to be fixed, because county government plays a vital role in the development in each one of our towns and cities, because we want to be a part of. When, when hell came to Shorter, Macon County put up 100-plus thousand dollars in that incentive package. Macon County put up money into Hyundai plant, part of the state's incentive package. You know, so we want to be a part of, because if Shorter develops, if Nottosaga develops, Franklin develops, Macon County develops, Macon County benefit. So we're not, we're not isolated to one area. We're, we're looking at the total development of the county. It doesn't matter where it happened to us. If it happens in Shorter, fine, that's helping Macon County. Happens in Tuskegee, fine, that's helping Macon County. So, and we're trying to get out of this stigma that we seeing, is that Macon County is in Tuskegee, it's just the opposite. Tuskegee is in Macon County. Shorter is in Macon County. Nottosaga is in Macon County. Franklin is Macon County. So don't it serve to, serve to prove that if, if we help them develop, Macon County develops, Macon County gets stronger? So, and we're not, we don't want to take anything from municipalities, but municipalities have more local legislative power than commission. We have to, say, if we wanted to do somebody occupational tax, we have to get permission from the Alabama legislature to do it. City of Tuskegee, Shorter, Franklin, they don't have to do that. They can do it by vote of their city council to add an occupation, whatever occupational tax they want to. And it's legal. It is legal. But anyway, I wanted to, the purpose of this meeting tonight was to share with you what legislation we have proposed, so that you can be free in terms of what you hear and being rumored out there. That's not what we're proposing, okay? Any other question? Dr. Kirk, listen.
I got it, Maggie. You don't know him like I do.
I was, I had to, you know.
Yeah, we, we let you say it.
Well, everybody know I was born and raised here in Little Texas, go all that, back my family, it was 1853 when we had our first property out there. And Macon County, can't do nothing without no money. That's been out of problem. Everybody running from taxes. There's 2% you got. You don't have, this county don't have the money to match the state and federal funds to build these roads and to build the bridges and things. We have to wait until the money is generated. The 1% gas tax going into roads and bridges, you know, everybody in here, what little gas they buy around here, a lot of them goes to Alden. It ain't gonna amount to nothing to us. But when you get down there and all them trucks coming through and everything down here, these truck stops, y'all know how big that thing is gonna be. That 1% is gonna put a lot of money into the county and our roads and, and our bridges. And I am 100% for the 1% gas tax.
We're not, we're not talking about 2% now.
Uh, well, I thought you had 2%.
Yeah, 2%, 1% for road and bridge, and 1% for economic.
I, I will get to that. 1% to the gas tax. And then the other 1%, I understand, is going for economic development.
Right.
Now, I was involved with Emma Harris, President of Alabama Power Company, Tim Posen, Billy Joe Kemp, bringing Mercedes to Birmingham, the first Mercedes thing. And I was involved in what all it took for everybody to come together with the hat and the money in it to bring it up there. So look and see what that 1 Mercedes plant is done throughout this state of Alabama. Everybody wants to come, because we had the money and the property and everything to match. So we hadn't got anything in here in Macon County, because that y'all don't have the money to operate with. Now, the 1%, it ain't gonna hurt nobody in here.
It ain't, it ain't 1%, it's 1 cent.
1 cent, 1 cent.
1 cent. It ain't gonna hurt nobody over here, that you don't buy that much gas. But, that's local folks. But let me tell you something, when them big transport trucks run back and forth, and you see them down y'all at that big truck stop, you see three or four of them all over the country, every time they drive up there and stick that thing in there, these corporations don't care what the gas cost, they gonna have to buy it. And it's gonna bring money in here, so this engineer have money to match, match the federal funds and the state funds to build these roads. We don't have to wait three years to get a bridge fixed, because we ain't got the money to match it with.
Okay. And let me tell you this now, you know, 1 cent, 1 cent, how significant 1 cent is. And we, we've had to use it, the 1 cent, we've had to use the other funds to go to the bond market. Recently, in the last several years, I don't know how many, but the state had a program called A-Trip, right JT? It's A-Trip?
It's A-Trip? Macon County got, what, I'm like ten million, about ten million came to Macon County? Twelve, twelve point, twelve point eight million came to Macon County. Now, we had to go to the bond market to flow the bond to get the, there was a match required. Had we not had to go to the bond, get the bond to match it, you think we would've got that? We would've lost that. But that twelve point eight million, we have completed, what, four or five bridges? And we've got several others that's under construction that we would not have been able to get out. County Road twenty-two was our longest bridges, going on Oklahoma's Road.
County Road fifty-four.
County Road fifty-four.
County Road two.
County Road two. Fifty-six.
County Road twenty-six, County Road ninety-four. And also, Shorter, and I've got County Road forty, the backside of the track, Tuskegee would not have got Franklin Road, Tuskegee would not have got Oklahoma, Columbia Highway either.
So, so, again, we had to go to the bond market to, 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 we didn't have the money in our, in any reserve fund to match that. We had to make the decision to go to the bond market to, to, uh, flow the bond, to get that match money to make this happen. Imagine losing twelve million dollars and you still got bridges that school buses can't cross, bridges that are closed, had to close them? Because it's our responsibility to look out for the safety of everybody. You go across these bridges in the county, uh, we take them for granted. But I mean to tell you, our engineer and his staff, they are under them bridges all the time inspecting, fighting with snakes and all that stuff, to making sure that these bridges, they inspecting these bridges to make sure that they are safe. Just because it, because I'm telling you, when he came in, when he came and said to the commission, we've got to, we're closing the bridge on County Road twenty-two. Is it twenty-two, Oklahoma? Well, whoever was, close the, made the city, close the bridge on twenty-two. I'm looking at it like saying, man, you know, that bridge look modified. And, and I could not explain that the average citizen's been crossing that bridge, there's nothing wrong with that bridge. But I understand that when, after it was closed, and when people going out to start do sword test, the thing collapsed in. You can imagine that you or somebody else been riding along that bridge and it collapsed in like that.
Mr. Chairman, excuse me, but doesn't the state go along with our engineering and closing it?
No, that's a decision, our engineer makes that decision.
I believe, you both are correct, I can make the decision on that particular bridge. I believe this special agent was called in because of the question of how severe it actually was.
So, so, uh, but, but my point is, these bridges, we used to cross over these bridges every day that you cross over. Rest assured, the engineer and his staff, they're, they're looking at that bridge. It's not, they don't just let it sit there. They are constantly inspecting those bridges. I think JD, we have, we have the state require that we have to do certain amount of inspection, and we do some ourselves.
Every two years, every bridge must be inspected.
Every two years, every bridge must be inspected. And, and we're not talking about just standing on top looking at it. I've seen these guys go down in there. Matter of fact, I think they even got a little canoe, that somebody would decrease that they get in a canoe. I could, I would say, well, now, why we need a canoe for? But then I found out that you gotta get in the water, get up under there, under the bridge. Okay, did I miss anybody? Yes, sir.
I want to address Economic Development, and I agree with Dr. Kirk and most of the things that you have said. And we do have to have our citizens. Economic Development Board in Macon County, I have not been satisfied with their actions. One reason being that I have a hundred twenty-five acres, up to two hundred fifty acres. That is the very best industrial site in the county. Because it has a full sewer line, one mile long on property. It has electricity, it has charter cable and internet, it has double lane railroad access. It has over a mile of railroad, it has faces two miles of highway frontage. Now, I went to a Chamber of Commerce meeting, and Bobby Davis was the new chairman. And he got up and addressed that they had no economic development areas in the county. They needed more areas that could be used and designated as development. And I said, I have this property. And he said, where on the map? And I showed him, never heard another word. I called the Economic Development Board for the past two years and said, no one's ever come out and looked at this property. Well, at the time, WSFA Television had a special on development in Macon County. The chairman of the Economic Development Board was Jimmy Bass.
No, he's not Jimmy, not Jimmy Bass.
Not now.
Jimmy's never been the chairman.
He was the officer. And he and his brother were the only two people interviewing, and their property was the only property shown. And then shortly after the commercial, they had property designated by CSX as a great development property that CSX would service. Now, I have called and talked to several people at Economic Development, and no one has ever come. Now, Bobby Davis states in the Chamber of Commerce meeting, we do not have enough sites. We want to find and develop sites. And I have spoken four or five times to come out and inspect this site and see if it is acceptable, which I think it is.
Okay, well, let me say this, first of all.
Well, I haven't finished my point. My point is, if the county wide has a gas tax that is going to economic development, I believe the county commission should have checks and balances on how that money is spent by Economic Development Board.
And we will, we will.
And we paid Joe six thousand dollars a month as a consultant. I don't know, uh, how the Economic Development Board can come up with that amount of money to pay a consultant. And that consultant I spoke with, he came right here and looked at the property, and I've never heard from him again. I called him up, and he said, well, you need to take that up at the Economic Development Board.
Have you been to the Economic Development Board meeting?
No.
Because the Chamber of Commerce is not the Economic Development Board. Bobby Davis is not the chairperson of Economic Development. He's just, he's a member of the Economic Development Authority Board. But let me say this, and I'm coming back to you. Let me say this, economic development now, county, no, Economic Development Board does not go out and purchase property. Uh, we can't afford to do that, I mean, unless we got something specifically for it. For example, but we having people who, and, and I, I'm hoping you're saying that your property is available for, uh, economic development. So we can show it if somebody's interested in, 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 in economic development, that, that, that look at your site. We can show your site as a site for economic development. And we don't purchase property, all that property now unless we've got a specific project, you know? For example, the, 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 the CSX site, we have not purchased that site. The property owner agreed, has, has agreed with Economic Development Board of County, that our site is available for economic development. With, and they're, and, and that goes certain pre, there's a gushing of, they already know what the, what the going price is, so that if you get an interest, they won't be jacking the price up. It's already agreement on the sale price, the selling price of it. But we don't purchase it. But we are given permission to market it as a site. We don't go in and do a whole, spend a whole lot of money on clearing and all that stuff. So you might want to go to the Economic Development Authority Board meeting, because they're the one who makes the decision on that. Not Joe Turner, nor Bobby Davis. That's, that's a decision that the Economic Development Board itself would make. An agreement would be between you and the Economic Development Board, if you're saying that you want to make your property available for economic development. And what they would do would put it in inventory so that people look at it. And I'm telling you right now, people are looking at sites from Russia. They can look at sites in Tuskegee from Russia, anywhere in the world. So if we put the site in place and, and put, put in the profile, so like he said, this site has slugs and all of that, of course, you know, floodplain, all those things are taken to a place, railroad and all that, that become a part of the profile, it's located in Macon County so far from the interstate. When people are looking for sites for economic development, first of all, they, they try to go to the region. They say, we want to go in the southeast region. Once again, that region, then it start narrowing down to states. These are the possible states. And these are the sites that we're looking for with this profile. And they put it in the computer, computer, if your site, if our sites are in, in the system, it will generate. These are the sites that are in Macon County that fall within the broad parameter of the profile that the folks are looking for. And that's how they start narrowing down. They're narrowing down because you can Google a site. You can Google a site and look at it, look at the layout of it, look at its proximity to a whole lot of things. Uh, that's simple now. People do that from all over the world now. They don't send a team in here to, to go over Macon County. They won't send nobody in here until they just about to narrow the site down to a few sites. And I'm gonna tell you, we've had some people to come and look at our CSX site all over the world. I mean, it's a good itch. And, but I would recommend, because that sound like it's a good, good site. But that's something that the board itself would have to make a decision on. And I would, I would get on the board generally, and, and if you're willing to offer that site as, as, as one, and we, we really do, you know, negotiate, you put that site in inventory as part of our industrial development portfolio, we would be honored to have it. But that's a decision that the Economic Development Board would have to do. And whatever y'all work out, that's, that would be up to you. But I would, but I would not, you know, Bobby Davis was speaking from the Chamber of Commerce, and he has the right to do that.
And he's on the Economic Development Board also.
Right, he is. But he's, he is, he does not speak for the Economic Development Board. The board speaks for itself. He's just one member speaking. And he could not have made, he couldn't make the decision, not Joe Turner could make the decision, whether your property become an inventory or not. That's a decision that the board will make. And then they would direct Joe Turner to do whatever is necessary for you to work out the details to make it happen.
Well, with, on that make, they've had two years to contact me about doing that, and there's been zero contact.
Well, it could be they may not be interested in, in your site.
That's wrong.
Yeah, I mean, I, I can't speak for the Economic Development Authority. I don't know why they wouldn't be, how many acres you got, you got, how many acres you got available?
A hundred twenty-five to two hundred fifty.
Okay, I can't speak for them, but I, I would definitely say if you're interested in, in putting it, I would definitely meet with the Economic Development Authority Board. I would be happy to let you know when they, I don't know, right, anybody know when they meet? Again, I could check, if you give me information, I'd be glad to share that information with you. Do we have anybody else? Yes, sir, I'm sorry.
Uh, speaking, my concern, and I came out was because of the one percent for economic development. So, uh, you know, it's, I hate to use that term, but that's the going term, uh, here to state. You know, and I know when we, we're a local community that don't want taxes, and here we want to raise taxes. It's just, uh, it's, it's controversial, it's tight, the economy is tight. And again, so, if the commission gonna get out the box and look at some other things, you know, I, I heard some stuff, because I've been, been county away, about anybody come in and say they want jobs, we just throw everything out, and we don't, you know what I'm saying? But economic development, when we have natural resources and sites here, tourism, Mr. Noah, he writes about it all the time. We kind of like just default to the Tuskegee area. But we have, oh, this, this was part of the Great Creek Conference. We got miles, we got all the kind of historic sites, up and down this creek and other waterways. And it would bring money. I go to other places, I travel, because I do a lot of research now. And the people are taking advantage of it. But here in Macon County, where it was the capital, as I, you know, I go back because of the touch of information. Like you say, Google, it's ready available. Dr. Kirk say his folks been here for eighteen fifty-three, when my folks been here before that. So let's start developing, let's start doing, getting out the box and creating locally. We always want somebody else to come in, but it's fine, but let's be rounded and balanced. We got a fine university up there with educated people, and we don't even look at that kind of stuff.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
It's two cents, period.
Two cents, right.
Not a percent.
Not, not a percent, two cent, two pennies.
Yes, Danny, you're correct.
Yeah, I, I kept going, I changed that, but it's law. They can't, it is a number of years back to legislature to increase that, correct? If you wanted to increase it.
Well, let me put it like this. We're not requesting anything now, and, and I don't think they would do it either. But if the legislature themselves frame a bill that calls for three cent, four cent, we can't stop it. I'm saying, but I don't think they're gonna do that. Only thing is ours is the request. They can, they can even cut ours to one cent. And they can, they can do whatever they want to do with it. You know, but our request, I'm talking about what we request it.
If you get what you, if we get what your request is, two cents on every gallon, correct? Um, it cannot be raised without going back to legislature.
That is correct. That is correct. Once it becomes law, it cannot be changed without going back to the legislature.
What's the success rate for moving? That is gonna be passed by a Republican control?
And, and we, they can change it in a city legislature.
But it had another, see, what we're talking about, we're talking about now, now, the city, city of Tuskegee, uh, the city, I'm gonna keep saying Tuskegee, but any municipality can add to that whatever they want to. They don't have to go to the legislature to, to do it. But what we're talking about, what we have to go to the legislature to get permission to do it. And we can't change that. The counties, whatever's approved for the county cannot be changed. But whatever happened in the city limit, that can be changed. It won't, it won't increase in revenue for us. They can put stuff on top of it, but we won't get it, we won't benefit from it.
Mr. Chairman, I.
I, I wait a minute, I make sure I saw, I saw one other hand right here first, and then I saw him, and then him, and then I'm coming here.
Uh, Chairman.
If I, if I did it wrong, I apologize, but I'm trying to watch, okay?
You're asking sacrifices from the people in this room, the citizens in this county. What sacrifices are the county commission going to make? How many county vehicles are out in that parking lot right now? And, and last year, uh, every year, I ask the county commission, how many of you going to the beach for your ACCA meeting? Last year, all five of you put your hands in the air, and you all go down to the beach in August for your association. It doesn't represent me, it represents you as a professional organization. You use our tax dollars to go down there. So therefore, if you're asking sacrifices from us, I ask you at this very moment, how many of you are gonna go to the beach this August?
I'm going. I'm going, I'm going to, I'm not going to the beach, I'm going to association meeting, which is only one meeting that we go to during the year, professional development. You have to go.
No, you don't, one can go.
Well, I mean, point is, point is, uh, there are some commission, and I'm not speaking for those commission. I wish we could go. If we had the resources where I could go to our national meeting, I would go. I have not, I have not, we have not had, I have sacrificed, have not gone to a national association county commission meeting since I've been in office, simply because we do not have the funds. The only, the only conference I go to is the annual conference of all county commissions, where we come together. Now, I do go to some classes, there's a few classes during the year that, that we go to. Some we was required by all new commissioners, we had to go. Then there are others that we go to because we just want to keep up with what's going on in county government. But we don't go, and I, and I want you to seem like, when you say going to the beach, it, this conference just happened to be at a beach. You know, sometimes I don't even go, don't even go out to the beach. You know, I don't even, don't even get a chance to even go to the beach. Sometimes I don't even want to go to the beach. So I don't want you to seem like that we are going to the beach. We just going to a conference that's happened to be at the beach. And we didn't just start, we've been doing this for years. And, and our county commission, and I must say, speak for them, because they do not go to the mini-conference that are available to go to, simply because we can't afford it. Only one conference that we go to, that's, that's the, the annual conference where all of the commissions of the county get together for our annual conference. That's the only one. That's the only one we go to.
You addressed the conferences, how many county vehicles are out in the parking lot?
Have no idea. Mine's out there.
I ain't got one.
How many is out there? We got three out there, okay? Got three, we got three county vehicles out there. I mean, what's the point?
The point is you're driving a county vehicle.
I've been driving a county vehicle and I'm taking a county vehicles, this was people elected me to go, to, to go to, to, to our this county. And I try my best to go whenever they call me, whenever there's a need, I try to go.
So you're asking for our sacrifices, but you're not willing to make sacrifices?
I am making a sacrifice. Okay, okay, uh, keep me, keep me first, keep me first and, and I understand what you're saying, Frank, and I respect that.
Based on the amount gasoline that's sold in Macon County, if you add two things per gallon, do you have an idea of how much?
Well, we, we looked at the figure, we really don't know, we get some projection, but as somebody indicated earlier, the gasoline that's sold in Macon County is not going to be the fact. What we are hoping, we're going to be attracting new, new dollars coming through Macon County. For example, love, love attract primary interstate traffic. Those are new dollars that we, we have not been getting before. Those are new dollars that we're getting, not getting. Again, like Commissioner Barry said, many, many, many citizens go to Auburn, what have you. But now, the gas, the state gasoline form, formula, it doesn't matter where you buy your gas at, that's what it state, because you can buy gas in Huntsville, Macon County gonna get, get a share of it under the state formula. Okay? So it, it, all the gasoline is distributed by the state to all municipalities in town, regardless of what is sold in their local, locale. Did you answer your question, Mark? Let me come back.
You've been projected about five hundred thousand dollars per two cent.
About five hundred thousand?
A year.
Okay. Uh, what, what?
This tax is countywide, which includes all the incorporated towns.
Yes. Okay. Dr. Kirk?
Uh, I want to ask a friend over here about y'all going to the meeting down in the Gulf Shores. I go down there at my own expense, because I don't even represent nobody with Willie Kirk. I have sat there in those meetings and seen what a business like, things that's going on, how much each commissioner could talk about, what they doing and what they doing. And if you don't go down there and conundrum with all these commissioners and get together and be one, you, in other words, we've been having for years. And I've seen what our commissioners has done, because I'm there looking, they go to classes, they have the governor speak, they have lieutenant governor speak, they have speakers that week all over the state of Alabama, agriculture, and it's nothing but education for all our commissioners. And I would invite you to go down there with me at the next meeting and, and see what's going on.
My point is, if we're being asked to make sacrifices, where's the county making sacrifices, miss? That's my point.
Okay, and the point is well taken, and we're, like I said, we're not here to debate with each other, we're here to share information. And everybody's entitled to their own opinion, to formulate their own opinion based on what we got. If you don't support what we do, we understand that too. If you support it, we appreciate that too. Well, number one, but, but again, like we said, we, we're still praying that the Alabama, our legislative delegation will, will follow through. Because again, until it passes, we have nothing but to quit. Yes, sir.
Mr. General, you know, I think we make one heaven of sacrifice. Uh, you go down there to the convention you just told me about, every county down there drives up in the video, every county commission, Macon County don't. Uh, we don't have a county vehicle. But you go down there, every, that lot, two parking lots are full of county vehicle that every other county drive down there. We don't have that. Uh, and I can guarantee you, you can put out travel expense against any county in the state of Alabama and we'd be the lowest one.
Lowest, because we don't travel, we don't travel. And, and it's not because we don't need to, because we can't afford to. We understand that.
Because we are the poorest county. Correct.
That's right.
Well, well, you're talking about the poorest county, but we're, just because you're poor, you don't have to be ignorant and not learn what's going on around you in county government. You've got to get out there and network, you can't stay here. You can't stay here in Lockton, Macon County. You've got to network around this county. That's how, that's how poor counties are able to survive. We depend on each other. We have to, we have to find out the things that we're doing that we don't have money to do, somebody else is seeing that same problem. How do you work it? It may or may not work with us, but if you don't know about it, you're still doing things the same way. Believe me, and I understand, uh, we do sacrifice. And if, if, and I'll tell you right now, if our county was in much better financial shape, yes, I will be attending more, more national conference. Yes, I will be going to Washington, meeting with some officials up there. Yes, because there is a need, there is a need. And we have got to, but I understand, number one is, I could probably attend some if I feel like driving, but you know, I don't want to, I don't want to take that, I'm not as young as I used to be. I can't drive to Washington back and forth like I used to be. But we can't afford to, I can't afford to fly, you know, those kind of things.
But for Louis, probably a poor county, I thought we had Jesus.
Well, Jesus expect us to be, 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 uh, uh, smart and wise.
Well, why are we, all these natural resources, this rivers and all this, all this beautiful pasture, the only thing them guys come down from the, hey, from the north to come down here, hurry and go back, we got to get out of the box.
Okay, anybody else? We have, uh, we have five minutes. Yes, ma'am. Miss, Miss Patton, later come here.
Why am I so saying?
Go ahead and go ahead, come on.
Right, so the commissions cannot hear anything, just send up in the office in district one, two, and three, and four, they need to get out there and watch the people so they can learn something, bring that to Macon County to help Macon County.
Miss Patton?
In the last convention.
Miss, Miss Patton, you jump ahead and Miss Patton. Old Titanic, jump ahead and Patton, Miss Patton.
Okay, my question has continued before you all discussed, I have some difficulty, so they might go along.
Okay, you ain't, you don't have something that had anything to what we discussing? Come on, come on, committee.
Hands over here. I'm just saying, in the last commission, uh, conference, we found out some money that we've been missing, a hundred thousand dollar a year. And we, we receiving that and how about picking up scrap, uh?
All right, now, Tom, you got it, you know.
I was just gonna ask you for, if you have an update on home and number road payment, that's all I was asking.
Uh, JD, JD, will you just say, speak a word to that, please?
It is scheduled to be let, and it's scheduled to be let here in April.
In April?
It's let, let, in April.
Let mean, let meaning?
It will be let bid to the bill. It will, it should start sometime around the first of June. Uh, Macon County, it is going to be doing the inspection of the project, this is where you speak, this is where you speak, you be told to be first, this is their project, but we will be doing the inspection on it. And I'm going to advise everybody that we have a very large public relation, outpouring everything that the school knows, students know, we know, here, live here, know when that project's going to take place. One reason why we started in June is why, so we're going to play together, we also do have some requirements in the contract terms in the plans, that no work can be done from Thursday at noon on home football games till Monday at noon. If they do, happy to be doing, all lanes of traffic, including pedestrian traffic, must be open, means all the sidewalks have to be open and both lanes of traffic are protected. So we're trying to protect as much as we can, the ability to move people from one side of the road to the other.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. JD. I see a hand in the back.
Two rows. They have any hope rise, uh, exchange coming off of eighty-five and Tuskegee down terrible, the promise.
Say what now?
That, uh, exit coming off terrible, the back end of the year.
Sixty-five.
No, not if, no, uh, again, you talk, we talking about sixty-five, they changed. Let me tell you, uh, what I know about it, JD can help me. Uh, I was talking to Representative Thad McPlannan, I think many, many years ago, he was one of the, the pushers behind that. Of course, the, some, you know, the university has to be a big player in that if that is to happen. But decision on that really rests with the highway department. So, but there is no plan that I know of that's active, and maybe a plan on the shelf somewhere that, uh, talks about that, but there is no act, activity, to my knowledge, JD, you know of any? To, uh, to do anything there. There was a plan on the shelf, I don't know how developed that plan was, uh, was it, was it beyond discussion and what have you, but I, I don't think it ever got to the point of, of, of money. Because, you know, when you can talk about these things, if you don't have money to, to do with this, it's just talk. Did I see another hand? Yes, ma'am.
Since you're talking about roads, I'd like to know about Franklin Road in terms of safety. Are, do you have any plans to put any reflectors out, because at night you can barely see either lane, and this is the wall of the work town, so is there a plan to put new reflectors out or something else as a safety issue for those of us who drive that road?
Okay, is, is that, that's, we're hopeful we've got JD, JD, and what about? Okay, Franklin, Franklin Road, uh, I think that's gonna have to be addressed to town of Franklin and Tuskegee.
Especially I'm talking about.
Wait, what you talking about?
Corporate city limits of Tuskegee.
It's in the corporate limits?
It's right outside of the corporate, so the car I'm talking about is in the corporate city limits. Frank Martin Lane, it's got a long there's six, most of them, all the way there into town hall is past the new, um, sustainability building that's going into town hall and that is not into town right.
Okay, JD, uh, she's talking about from Walker Stool to the city limits of Tuskegee.
To Canarsus.
Canal Road sixty-five, that's in our jurisdiction?
Yes.
Okay, uh, the question is, are we able to put some, will we be able to put some reflectors or update the reflectors there?
Let's take a look at it and get back, how much your money, all right.
Uh, okay, well, just.
Our numbers ten, Paul.
Just let us, let us, we, we will look at it and if we, if we can do it, we will, because we want to do what we can for safety purposes, okay? Okay? But we don't want to like to say right now that we're gonna jump out there and do it. Uh, we have to look at it, evaluate it, to see what's involved, okay? Any others? Okay, let me, let me say this, it's, it's, uh, we have been here hour and three minutes and time is not, but I think it's been time well spent. I really do appreciate you all coming. Uh, this is our third meeting and the largest crowd we've had, uh, so far. And, and believe it or not, please understand that, uh, we want you to know what we're doing. You don't necessarily have to always agree with us. I'd rather for you to, to run into me down the street and jump on me about what we're doing than to say, I didn't know y'all were doing that. So I want you to know what you disagree with me about, okay? Okay, uh, we, we meet again tomorrow at six o'clock, at, we're gonna meet, our meeting in District One will be at the Irish Chisholm Community Center, uh, up in Little Texas. So you're all invited to come there. I don't think I'll have anything new, I don't know what's new gonna come from the floor, but my presentation will be the same, okay? But you're always invited to come in here again. Anything else, again, let me say thank you. If you, if you can support it, if you can support it, it won't hurt our feeling if you call Representative One and Senator Beasley to let them know. And if you can't support it, and you want to call them and tell them not to support it, but let them hear from you, okay? Let them hear from you. Uh, because now, let me say this, we are hoping Representative One had indicated that she may call for a referendum. We are asking, not for a representative referendum, not that we don't want the citizen to vote, but because by the time you get a, get a vote and put it into place, if it passes, we may miss the opportunity. We've had to be positioned to be ready to, to, to act. Again, understand, when nobody sit here and leave here tonight and say, you told us we gonna get this industry. What I'm telling you is that we're trying to position, position ourselves to put together a package that we can compete for it, okay? Coach, we, and your comment, but you also closed out with a prayer.
I just want to say that we need jobs, we need jobs and got a road. In the meanwhile, uh, before you lay down tonight, just tell the pastor that he will lead us to our creation, make the Bible here for the mission. Lord God, again, you have blessed us in this meeting. We thank you for your holy spirit. Lord God, as we depart from the place, Lord, I say, Jesus name, please, see us home by safety, in Jesus name, amen.
Amen. Thank you all so much.